Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
All our meetings order at 6:30. Now I have to bring up my agenda, sorry. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Anyone, anyone?
Jessa, this is Debbie.
Hi.
Hi. As I had discussed, I wanted to see about putting a discussion of the, and perhaps a passing of an MOU this evening, Memorandum of Understanding on the Teachers.
Yes, and my question is, does that have to go in executive session of targeting? Or no?
I don't believe so. I mean, basically, this is the S- we're at the SU and the individual school boards have to pass it. You can start the discussion at the SU level, but it has to be disseminated. And I think, and I know that Priscilla did something at their board level recently.
So let's do that as 4B under other. Okay. And then... Do we want to elect an assistant chair tonight? Or do we want to deal with the seating of Westminster first? And going over the bylaws?
Jessa? Yeah. I think that we should put off electing the assistant because our board right now, we'd be appointing actually. It's kind of in a little bit of flux too, because the high school hasn't met as far as whether they want to appoint somebody different.
So we'll remove 5B. Do we have communication and public comments?
Okay, we should take attendance to make sure we have.
We can take attendance, yes. I see Molly here, so I think we have a board, but...
Jessa, I see a hand raised on the public comments, someone named Gianni.
Okay, let me just make sure we have everybody, enough people here. We have Jack and Molly, we have Deb Wright, we have Megan.
Megan and Jason and Priscilla from Rockingham.
We have me, we have Lynn.
Is Brenda Frakis there?
Brenda is not going to be here.
She's in Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Okay. No one had told me that. I am, I was really here tonight to listen, but if you don't have a forum, I will participate.
I thought she said she called you, maybe not.
She had sent me an email that I thought I forwarded.
Just tell me where you need me before I start working, not paying total attention.
Okay. Let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We have nine, right?
Good.
So that is good. Now communication and public comment.
So do you need me?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
You have two hands.
Two hands, pick one.
You've got nine and two and a half.
Teen. Teen, okay. Tina?
It's teen, it's short.
Sorry.
It's, oh, it's fine. I just wanted to start by saying I appreciate, I have two children who go to Westminster, one in pre-K and one in the elementary school. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the work put in this year, both by teachers and administration in the school. I feel like my kids are safe, they are so happy to go to school every day. They love their teachers, they love their school, and I just really appreciate everyone who's working at the school. I also have concerns that, not necessarily in the Westminster Board, but in the Rockingham Board, there's still a lot of discussion around whether or not masking is appropriate. And I think that those conversations just need to end. We know masking helps to slow this spread of the virus. We know that the virus is really prevalent in our communities right now, and that our youngest children are unprotected against the virus, have not had the opportunity to be vaccinated. And I feel like trying to make those decisions is not taking our children's safety into account. And that's really the number one goal of all schools today for the children are safe. I also have some concern that some of the boardmaker members making decisions don't necessarily understand the wording in the governor's guidance around the use of operational and instructional use around masking. Doesn't mean you take your mask off when you sit at your desk, that would not make masks, that would totally negate the use of masks. It's, for examples, like when a kid might be learning to count, and they're confused about the difference between 13, 14, and 15, because they all sound similar, you might show them your mouth to hear and see what those numbers sound like, and then you'd immediately cover your mouth again. So I'm hoping that the masking conversations can end, we'll keep kids in masks, our kids are safe, they're happy in school. And again, I just really appreciate all that this school has done to make sure that our kids are safe in masks. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sue Haskins?
Hi, thank you for hearing me tonight. I was hopeful that I could get a letter to the board out before tonight's meeting. And unfortunately, I did not make that happen. So I hope that this is an appropriate time to share my thoughts. First, I'd like to thank the board for the important role that you play in our community. The past few years have been, have had a tremendous responsibility of not only ensuring that our students are educated, but also keeping our school community safe during a global pandemic. As a parent of a student on an IEP, I would like to express my concern with appointing Mr. Haas as interim superintendent. We have worked with Mr. Haas in his role as Director of Student Services, and in an effort to avoid exploiting our child, I will summarize by saying that his department has been failing our students and their families since he was hired. I am not alone in my concern. During the September 8th board meeting, Deborah Wright mentioned she received multiple calls from poorly served parents of special children, special needs children. We are not solving any problems by just putting anyone in that seat. We need someone who is qualified and someone who is experienced, not to mention the trail of vacancies this leaves behind. Who will be responsible for ensuring we are compliant with federal law? The ripple down effects seems risky. Coming off a year and a half, we just went through, our students can't afford to go another year without adequate supports and services. Though I don't understand what happened during executive session, I chose to remain hopeful. Hopeful Mr. Haas would rise to the occasion and set a standard with communication and follow-up when needed. Hopeful we would fill his role as Director of Student Services with someone who cares about our students and their family, and someone who understands the importance of working as a team rather than an us versus them. Hopeful we would see change. That hope didn't last long. On September 9th, the day after Mr. Haas was appointed interim superintendent, we made the decision to send our child on the bus. The PM bus route still had not been posted, even though it was three days after school started. Long story short, our child didn't arrive home as expected. I had to call the middle school to report that our child didn't return home. I made the call five minutes before the school was scheduled to close. And it became apparent they didn't have a protocol for this type of situation, or they didn't know what the protocol was. Mrs. Johnson had to reach out to Mr. Haas via his personal cellphone. Fortunately, our son arrived home. He was put on the wrong bus as a result of not having the PM routes. And I'm thankful the driver of that bus was kind enough to make sure he made it home safely. The next day, I spoke with Mr. Haas, expressed concerns, and requested follow-up to explain the protocol and suggest that every parent be given an emergency line to call should this happen again before or after hours. Sadly, Mr. Haas didn't follow up as promised, and when brought to his attention, his response was, and I quote, "I'm still trying to get my new schedule under control. Unannounced school board members is not something I am used to." The district lost my child. I didn't trust the system or feel safe, and my concerns were not important enough to follow up on. These concerns are not something to be taken lightly. Please help us ensure that our students are getting the support they need and deserve. Please make sure proper protocols are in place to ensure our children are safe and parents are informed of them. And please make sure we have the right person for this job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sue. Do we have anyone else?
Jessa, I wonder if we can do a sound check and make sure people can hear you? I'm just curious.
Oh, can you hear me? Jack, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're coming across good.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, next we have... Interim Superintendent's Report.
All right, so... Trying to put together a report and figure out exactly what to pass on to you guys. Trying to figure out, obviously, it's been a whirlwind start to our school year. You know, we were able to open all our schools with excitement on September 7th with students returning. Unfortunately, the enthusiasm was short-lived. Almost, I would say, every school up to date has been affected because of COVID. In Westminster Center School, we've had three positive cases so far this year, and we've had to close three classrooms for quarantine. Grafton Elementary has had three positive cases, and we've also had to close the entire school because of quarantining. Central Elementary, it's had four positive cases, that is up to date as of today, and has had to close one classroom to quarantine. Saxon's River has had zero cases, and they, quarantine is unknown at this time, just because of the lack of positive cases, which is a good thing. The Middle School has had three positive cases, and they've had to have multiple students quarantined due to contact tracing. And the High School has had one positive case, and has also had multiple students that have had to quarantine. The majority of our quarantining has been due to contact tracing, except obviously for the people with the positive cases, that's also happened. Despite this, teachers, staff, and administrators have continued to provide our students with a high-quality education. I would highly recommend that the board, that we extend our mask mandate out for all staff and students, at least at this time through the end of October, and then we can continue to review transmission rates and make the decisions based at that point. I would also highly encourage the board to enter into a memo of understanding with the WNEA regarding a mandatory vaccination for all staff. I know we're going to add that after this. Just some updates on vaccination rates, because that's come up with some other boards. Central has 94% of their staff is vaccinated. Grafton, 95% of the staff is vaccinated. Saxon's River, 92% is vaccinated, are vaccinated. Westminster Center School, 94% are vaccinated. Melles Falls Middle School, 66% of the staff is vaccinated, and 25% of the student population that is eligible for vaccination is vaccinated. And then the High School, at the time of putting this together, Mr. Brody was unable to give me the numbers back, so I've asked him to report that out Monday at the board meeting, but I'll update the board if he gives that information to me this week. While all of the staff at WNESU has been working extremely hard, I'd like to publicly acknowledge the work of the school nurses and the work that they have done. Our school nurses, Rebecca Stockwell, Jennifer Lawn, Jen Burke, Desiree Wilbur, Kat Goodall, Megan Rink, and Whitney Patterson have gone above and beyond, often they are here until 9 o'clock at night making phone calls to parents. And, you know, those phone calls are not always easy with parents, so it's been, the work they have done is just astounding. And then the other piece is with Rockingham passing the motion for the mandate, we've been working on a way for faculty to submit proof of vaccination. And we've worked out a system where teachers can upload their vaccination card to a secure site, and then that would just, it wouldn't be their passing it around or having to go to lots of people, because we know that there's, you know, people want to keep information personal. So Ricky has been working on that. I think we'd be ready to launch that pretty fast and start getting people to put things up, even if we don't have a memo of understanding for the whole SU. And then the other thing I wanted to, just to talk about with the board, there's been a lot of questions around ESER and the ESER funds. And I put together a slideshow just about it, and how I kind of approached this was basically like if no one knew anything about ESER, so if, but I may go through it fast, but please stop me, because there is a lot of information in here to digest, so. But ESER, when we refer to ESER, it's part of the elementary and secondary school relief allocations, and there's three large pieces. It's ESER 1, which is the CARES Act, ESER 2, which is the C-R-R-S-A, and ESER 3, which is what we refer to as ARC. So, but Ricky, can you just... So, essentially, and part of this is the AOE is requiring that we put all this up on the website anyway, so part of this is built up, just, this will go up on the website tomorrow. So, we received, basically, through those three allocations, and then we've also gotten some other supplemental grants that have specific focus that we'll go into in a little bit here, so. Next slide, please. All right, that's a little granular, but in ESER 1, which was, all of these were, these three main ones were awarded on March 13, 2020. And they have different end dates that they go through. So ESER 1 ends September 30, 2022. And we were awarded $1,483,495.98. We've received that grant, it's been invested. Looking at it, we have a need to go back and make some amendments, which we're allowed to do, and do some reinvestments of things. And ESER 2, which goes until September 30, 2023, we received a total award of $5,828,77. We received that, obviously, and part of that has been invested, and some of it needs to be, go back and amend some of the investments we've done. But with ESER 2, we have to fully invest by November 1st of 2021.
What does it mean by invest?
Great question. So invest means, you can help me here, but invest means that we have kind of earmarked the money for certain strategies. We haven't spent the money, but we've kind of said this is what we want to spend it on. And then, obviously, because the grant has three years, you can go back and change those investments, because things change, so.
Yeah, the AOE just wants to make sure that we have the intent of spending the money.
So when you say it's been received, do you mean awarded or like in the bank?
Awarded.
Awarded, so we have it. And the reason I have that language is there is actually the last one, which is a homeless 2. It's specifically targeted for homeless students. We've expressed interest in wanting that, those dollars, we haven't been awarded those dollars yet, so. So ESER 3, or ARC, goes until September of 2024. The investment date of when it's all due is still, the AOE is kind of coming up with those dates. We were awarded $13,079,351. And so there, we partially received in our grant management system, so we can see that we have about $8 million and change, about 8.5, because the AOE has to hold back part of that until we do our total submission, but we will be awarded that $13 million. We also were awarded one specifically for IDEA, for Part B, which is for students K through 12, we're awarded $99,225. That investment is the same as the ESER 2, we have until November 1st to earmark what we want to spend those dollars on. At the same time, we received another one for the pre-K for IDEA, and that was $7,076. And then, as I said, the last one was this homeless one that literally just came across the desk the other day, which is $44,756, that is targeted for homeless students. Sorry. So, again, a little bit, just if people aren't aware of what ESER allows us to do, under the CARES Act, we're allowable to use these funds related to preventing, preparing for, and responding to COVID. And so, I won't go into all those things, but basically, it's a list of ideas that they are suggesting we can use the funds for. So we've used a lot of those funds already, investment of like PPE, and also getting kids ready for remote learning and stuff like that. So that's what a lot of that, those funds were used for already. Go to the next slide, Ricky. So under ESER 2, basically, ESER 2 picks up everything that ESER 1 had, so all those things that were in ESER 1 are allowable under that. But then ESER 2 is also about construction and renovation projects to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID. And so some examples of things like that are like replace carpet to tile because of the cleaning that goes on with carpet versus tile. Or to look at construction projects that might help with social distancing. And then HVAC systems, which we're all aware of here at the high school, or what other places are, you know. And then the other piece that it targets is high-quality instruction materials in curriculum, related PD. So things around, examples that the AOE comes up with is new reading curriculum, social emotional learning, multiple tiers, systems of support and curriculum that can be both online and in person. And then the last one is acquisition of real property or modular outdoor classrooms. So those are the focus that they'd like us to look at. And then ESER 3, and again, ESER 3 is that large amount of money, is everything that is in ESER 1 and in ESER 2, but it has to be tracked separately from ESER 1 and ESER 2 funds. So, and there are different requirements that both the LEA and then the state have to follow for how those dollars are spent. And then it requires meaningful engagement with stakeholders and allow for public comment. ESER 1 and 2 did not require those. So what that means is putting together a committee that is actually looking at how those dollars are being spent. ESER 3 also requires that at least 20% of the total award must be used to address loss of learning. So it must specifically target loss of learning, and then the remainder of the funds can be used, as I said, under the same as ESER 1 and ESER 2. This gets even more granular. So that kind of just explains what I just talked about, so we can jump past that, just a little word that. The IDEA, again, it follows the ARC, because that, that's why I kept the ARC letters in there, the American Recovery Plan, because that has those specific needs for meaningful engagement with stakeholders. It targets that specific population. It can be used for coordination of early intervention, intervening systems or services, which allows us to actually expand outside of special education, if we want to look at using the funds that way a little bit. And then also, it just follows the same guidelines that IDEA be followed, which has very specifics because it's attached to that law. And then the homeless, as I said, it targets the homeless population. They don't actually have allowable things out under it, but what they had under the homeless 1 was academic services, extracurricular activities, transportation costs, additional supports, and PD, so very much targeting that population in our community. So here's our spending to date. So, again, of the 1.3 million, or we have spent, or allocated, pardon me, 1.3 million of the total 1.4 award. And $862,000 and change has been spent. And at the breakdown in the two years that we spent, spent about $782,000 last year, we've spent about $79,000 this year already. And right now, $337 has not been spent. It's been allocated to strategies, and I think we need to go back and look at some of those strategies and maybe look at how we can reinvest them into maybe some other plans that are, that have sprung up. You know, one of the things we, we're seeing is kids are coming back, right? Our students in kindergarten through second grade have spent almost no time in school. And so some of the needs that they have aren't always the needs we were anticipating last year, we were thinking that, you know, obviously, students would be ready, so that might be an area to look at. A lot of the money in ESER 1 has been spent, salaries and benefits, equipment, a lot for food services, vehicles, cleaning and sanitation, PPE supplies, summer programming supplies, medical supplies, and digitizing paperwork, the central office move, contracted services, and then some hardware, some Chromebooks and iPads, things of that nature. ESER 2, again, only 1.5 million has been allocated to date of the 5.8 million. We've only spent $361,000 and change so far on ESER 2. And again, just to reiterate, this is the one that closed, we have to have everything in by November 1st. And so right now, of what's been allocated, 1.1 million hasn't even been spent for what we said we were going to spend it on. And so there's a real need to go back and look at that, obviously, and make some good investments. Again, a lot has been spent on salaries, benefits for summer camp after school, added a homeless liaison, the director of operations, the director of after-school, summer programming, and other interventionists that are working in our buildings. Social emotional learning consultants, the Focus Schools, which many of you are involved in, that's the group that's bringing it all together, and that, all that information is going to be used to help with ESER 3. So that's the front-loading of finding out our needs for ESER 3, so some of that, and these amendments. And then supplies for summer and after-school, and then some software also for this. So what I'm proposing is that we convene what I would call an ESER committee of stakeholders, even though for ESER 1 and 2, the law doesn't say we need it. I think, I can't make decisions all based on my own, and need the teachers and the administration and the community to be involved in that, but also board members. So what I'm proposing is we put a committee together that we get two board members who can sit and be a part of that decision-making process. But also, this would be a meeting that's open to anyone, if they're not part of it, they can still join and hear what we're talking about. But review the remaining allocated work strategies, amend them if they're necessary, allocate the remaining resources, and then that committee would continue and could expand to meet the requirements of ESER 3 stakeholders for that meaningful engagement. And so it would provide us the framework that we need for that case. I don't know if there's another slide. No, there isn't. So that's what we have.
Don't we already have a committee that was already formed and supposedly meeting and making decisions?
So that's the Focus Schools that I mentioned. They're not really making decisions on how to actually invest the funds. They're working on more of where should we target those pieces? So we've been looking at student engagement as one of our areas, will lighten me, I don't have it off the top of my head, there's three other areas, or two other areas we're looking at, I'm going to look over here.
Social, social learning.
Social, emotional. Yeah, so thank you. So those are the main areas, and then it's a matter of what are we actually purchasing to go in there? Because I might have an idea of how I want to spend that money, and I think this 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 project or this program would be great for social emotional learning, but it may not really fit across ESU. And if we're going to make these big purchases, in my opinion, we need to make purchases that are meaningful and that they're not just singular like. So that's what I'm looking at doing is that kind of a committee to put that together. And it could be a lot of the same people, it is just.
I was wondering, because they would have a background of what happened.
Yeah.
To supply it, so maybe some ideas. I don't know Cheryl and I are on that, so I don't know how Cheryl feels in the meantime.
Oh, I think it'd be great. I actually think you and I might volunteer, and we'll look to see if there's anybody else, because I think it's a continuity from that recovery planning process to actually how the monies are spent would be highly appropriate. I'm certainly willing to serve on that.
Madam Chair?
I could do that, yeah.
Hi, just one, that Deb Bryce had her hand up for a while. And two, since this money tends to split into two sort of groups, if you will. One would be, we we've never convened our educational effectiveness committee, and I think that both you, both Cheryl and and Priscilla ought to be on it if they're not already. And I think that the other somebody should be on it from a buildings and grounds perspective, because a lot of this is infrastructure-related, or at least it will become so once you get into S R three. And I'm I would just ask that some, you know, two, I understand you don't want to have the whole board in these, Andy, but I think you ought to have at least enough so that there's somebody from both perspectives that have some expertise. They can say, yeah, we need a we need a tent more than we need a a pavilion. We need air handling more than we need new flooring kind of discussion. Because, you know, they've lived, they've been in these buildings, they've lived them, they've, many of them have had kids go through them, and so they've got an idea as to what really needs to be done for health and safety perspective.
Thank you. Yep, Deb.
Yes, my, I appreciate all the information that Andy's given us. However, what I'm still not seeing is, and I believe the report has asked for this more than once, a report on what has been spent already and on what. I mean, I look at the warrants, but I can't tell that the money spent was on was S R money. I have no clue, not based upon the warrant pages I get. So so I my understanding was that board members who also want to know what money has already been spent and what it was spent on. And we still haven't seen that, so we still have no clue.
So Deb, let me, if I could just ask, so you're looking for line item of that twenty-five dollars was spent on, and I'm making it up, but twenty-five dollars was spent on this pack of paper.
Well, no, that would be office supplies, it would be a total amount that would be spent on. The the chart of accounts, which would define what we're spending the money on, simple as, simple as that. Where is the S R money being spent? And I'm not talking about every little dime, but although, you know, we're working it out makes sense. However, thousands of dollars spent on personnel, thousands of dollars spent on building and grounds. You know, those are the things that I'm asking about and that we have asked about from the beginning and still have not seen.
Is that?
We can provide an extended year report.
Okay, that's what I thought what you had tonight was just sort of the quick.
I I apologize for that, yeah. We can, I can get that out to you.
Is it easier for you to just soak it all into a spreadsheet, or do you, is it already pre-categorized with totals? Like buildings and grounds, or do you have like every?
Yeah, so we can, it's actually in e-finance, there's a report called Detail Expenditure Status Report, and that basically shows you what the like budget that we put in there is, so probably like the most recent. And then what you've spent in that period, what you've spent year-to-date, and then like the remaining. But it's broken down by each account code. So you can group it into how, basically you can sort it however you want to. And I could export them all to Excel and then have like total S R one, total S R two, like on their own halves, because it crosses fiscal year, so you have to, and like the account codes changed because we cross off the account codes between F Y twenty-one and F Y twenty-two, so.
Can you, can you get that out in email? And then we'll, if we want it different, does that work, Deb? We'll get that in the next couple of days.
By the way, people, I can't see you anymore. The shared Zoom video seems to have gone out.
There's a chat that says, it looks like they lost their video, Jack.
Thank you.
Does that work for you, Deb? We'll get whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to finally get that off my chest and get it and and get it settled. So we actually know where things are going.
I knew that's what we wanted eventually, but I didn't know if they had an easy way to get it, but I guess they do.
Okay, that works.
All right, any other hands?
Cheryl. Oh, I'm just going to comment, building on Deb's comment. I really want to thank Andy and Shawna and the whole team who must have focused together. We have been asking for months for this kind of information, and you just gave it to us really succinctly. We're asking for more detail now, but this was a great start. And the fact that you can give us what Deb just asked for in the next few days is fantastic, so thank you.
Awesome. Hi Cheryl, I have played on the website. Would it be possible to, maybe at the beginning, put up all the acronyms? And what they, yeah.
In one of those slides, it did go through that. But but yes, there are lots of acronyms, and and they need to be spelled out, and that's.
Thank you.
Again, what the A O E is is talking about with a with a website and everything is we'll spell all that out beside them and just having that slide show.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Are we accepting paper vaccine cards as proof of vaccination, or are we verifying with the state databases?
Are we accepting?
Are we accepting a paper vaccine card as a proof of vaccination? Or are you verifying them?
I don't, I, I understand that the nurses are requiring that they have to show some proof. So as a kid, like I have my vaccination card at my home. I don't, I don't know if we're actually checking against the website.
I guess the various, is my employer considered paper cards unverifiable? Because you can buy them. And then if you could clarify for everybody out there, B T V L C online learning, does that or does that not qualify for S R money?
I have queried the A O E a couple of times. They've answered all my other questions, but that question. But I will ask you.
Include with some.
Because I know that is a, yes, I.
And then salaries and benefits out of the grant money, like. Are those term limited to the time that the grant is open? Or are we allowed, because typically with grants, we're not allowed to do regular positions, they have to be new. You know what I mean?
So unless, unless we migrate the position into the local budget at the end of the grant, then or we get additional grant dollars and decide to maintain that position through a grant, then that position will sunset.
Specifically, the director of after-school, because that's a position we have before. Could we move that to? Is that Oriana's name?
Yeah, I mean, Oriana was really a charity that we need to use specifically.
That was specific.
This is like a overall district-wide.
Okay, so it's a different. So it's a different title, different position. Jack?
Uh, yeah, but this actually gets down to some budget issues. These boluses of money run out in about two years. And some of these needs are likely to extend. I have grave doubt that COVID is going to be over in two years, and I have great, and we will probably need to have have some sort of after-school financing. And I would just encourage our administrators to, when when we prepare a budget, to try to keep as many things in one-time expenses in the S R money as possible. And if we have actual things that we're going to end up spending money on, on a continuing, on a going-forward basis, I would rather have them be in a regular budget, because they're going to be regular expenses. And I would rather not put money in, hoping that the federal government two years is going to be continuing to spend money on us, because I have grave doubts that's going to happen.
Anyone else? All right.
Just so just one other point on this. You know, we, we had said that, starting in September, we would start to articulate what our priorities were in terms of expenditures, in terms of our budget. And I don't know if this is a place to launch into that, but we do need to launch into that, because we're going to end up getting caught again, like we did last year, if we don't start to discuss that. And I'm hoping that, you know, I was hoping that this S R discussion might engender some discussion about where we do want to spend money on, because the amount that's going to come in via S R three in particular and S R two are like having an entire new school district in terms of dollars. So it's, it is something I'd like, I just want to urge that we not go another month without having a a broad discussion about both where S R fits in our overall budget and have a discussion about that budget, because otherwise, we're going to get ourselves back into a corner yet again.
Who is on the budget committee?
I am, Molly, I believe, is, I think Deb is, and I'm not sure if, yeah, and I think. Lynn, are you on that committee? You're on one of our budget committees, this one or is it the one of the elementary school?
I think I'm only on high school.
Okay.
I may be, Jack, too, I'll have to go back and.
Yeah, you know, I I just, I just want to get the gang together and and start this process sooner rather than later, because I'm, you know, I'm, I don't want to be paranoid about it, but I want people to know how this works so that I don't have to do it next year.
Yeah, go ahead, Cheryl.
Two points. One is that I certainly Westminster will want to be represented. Westminster will want to be represented on the budget committee, and I'm not sure we are right now. Secondly, I want to go back to the COVID-related report, Andy. And that is that, given, given all of these closures, given how many children are quarantined, given the upheaval to a degree in all of our schools, I'm, I'm, and I am so aware of how hard nurses are working, the principals, and all the faculty, everybody involved. It's just if you can continually keep us apprised. And we're pleased to see that the new surveillance testing system is going into effect. I wonder if you can also share with us the percentage of the population in each school that participates in the weekly COVID testing. That would be another metric that would be helpful to us, I think.
Yeah, and I apologize, I neglected to put that in the report. We're going to be getting surveillance done on the twenty-third.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah, so.
I don't have the S U committee assignments, I have the Union Elementary. Would you like to schedule a budget committee meeting?
Yes.
Do I do that here, or do you just schedule it?
Well, why don't you and I have a quick chat, and we'll, we'll, we'll circle availability like we do for other ones. Traditionally, this time of year, what we have done is all all boards have two meetings a month in their, in their schedule. And during the, during this time of year, we usually dedicate the second one to budget, and we consider it a, a committee, but it's a committee that's open so that the, we're expecting the members to do work, and we're expecting the non-members to attend and occasionally do work is how we work, how we've managed this in the past. I want everybody to be informed so that when we present, people don't have a lot of questions. But I want to basically a small working group and have and have it be open to whoever would like to participate.
Okay. And since I'm new here, Jack, I'm going to ask you a procedural question. Can, after we go over the Westminster members.
Yes.
At this meeting, even though it's not worn specifically, can we assign committee membership?
You, Madam Chair, have the power, in addition to the crown that you're not wearing tonight, to assign committee members. You can, you know, usually we ask people if they're willing, but you can, in your position, simply assign them and say, please, will you show up? Because we really need you.
Okay, in that case, I'll make a little announcement for the people here, because we're going to want to confirm the budget committee, and then we're going to want to assign at least one budget committee person and one or two others to the S R unnamed spending committee tonight. So if you're interested, raise your hand, send a message. You have like a half hour. Jack's interested, good. Or which, or the.
Which would be good to have that carryover. And the more the merrier, by the way.
Yeah, we just wanted to, the S R spending committee, because the the recovery committee ballooned to like thirty or forty people, and that it was just too many. So we want to drop it down to two or three probably board members.
That's why I said Cheryl and I could judge you for S R and that. But S R, you've got lots of carryover.
Madam Cheryl? One, one more really important point. I do want, you know, this, this budget session is going to be, this year is going to be educational as well as just perfunctory, because I don't think it's much of a secret that my intent is to start to wind up my involvement with school boards in the next, in the next, hopefully, year, year or so. And I really want people to be able to do this stuff and to do it without worrying that, you know, I'm going to need a phone call or something. So it would be really helpful if people can be there and will teach budget one-on-one as well as as actually do it. So that's, that is my hope. Thank you.
And Mr. Jason Terry?
Hi, Jessa, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, sorry I was late, I was at my daughter's field hockey game, and it was great. I just wanted to mention that there with David off the board, I believe there'd be an open seat. So maybe when Molly appoints somebody next Monday, we might need, you know, that that person might also be eligible to be on some of these committees as well. And I was on, for this board, I was on the budget, and I was also on the transportation. So just wanted to let you know that, just in case you did not know. So I don't know if it's best to wait until the next meeting, when, you know, when, when Molly appoints somebody or, you know, that sort of thing. So, thank you.
I don't know if we can wait that long, because it has to be done by November first.
I I'm looking to have this like.
Tonight.
Sometime next week. I mean, if we, if if a high school person wants to talk, I mean, we're not going to, again, we're not going to shut the door.
Apparently, since I can appoint anybody, if somebody really wants to, I can add them later. Thank you, Jason. You were on transportation and budget. Anyone else before we move on?
Hi, Jason.
Hi, Jason. This is Charlie Hutchison.
Hello.
Hi, I guess, I think I'm eligible to be on committee as a Westminster board member, so I'm willing to volunteer for some part of the budgetary committee process.
Yes. You have three board members, yes?
We do.
Okay. My first volunteer for the Budget Committee. All right, uh, do we have four? Yes, I got you two. For all the committees. Lynn, you want to be on the Budget Committee? Look at this.
Great.
Deb, you want to be on the Budget Committee?
I was. That's what I, that's, I remember Jack said my name and yes, that's what I recall last year. So if you need one, yes.
Molly, do you want to be on the Budget Committee?
No, thank you.
Okay.
That's the first honest answer I've heard.
All right, well, first we have to get down to new business. Staff resignation of board members.
She's going to do a B, a less vaccination.
The, oh, yes, that was part of the superintendent's.
MOU.
They have one of them on that.
Yep. So, discussion item, MOU with the teachers. This is with NEA just representing teachers.
It would be staff, support staff, and because they changed their structure a little bit, so they don't have the, they have two separate agreements, but it would be, WNEA covers.
Covers both, okay. All right, Andy has a draft MOU he would like to read or summarize for vaccination requirement for staff.
Um, Ricky, would you possibly pull it up on there just so we can? Sorry? Did I not put it in? Oh, it's on the.
Hang on, I'll send it to you, Ricky.
If you go. If you go into the report, it's the last link on the report, sorry. Apologize.
No.
All right, okay.
Here, Ricky, I'll forward, can you get the email if I forward it right now?
Oh, it's under the, it's under, it's highlighted under Memo of Understanding, sorry. Oh, you don't have access.
I just forwarded, oh, you still don't have access.
Oh, wait. So essentially, the Memo of Understanding would be between the Windham Northeast Supervisory Union, which is comprised of Rockingham School District, Phillips Falls Union School District, and the Windham Northeast Elementary School District, Union School District, and the, and the WNEA or the Windham Northeast Association. And it would be entered into whatever day we choose to do it. Whereas both parties recognize that COVID is a significant health and safety threat to employees, students and community at large. Whereas vaccines represent one vital mitigation strategy to help control the spread of COVID. Whereas vaccination of school staff is not sufficient to control the spread, other mitigation measures must be continued, including but not limited to screening, testing, mask-wearing, proof ventilation, quarantine, social distancing, cleaning, disinfecting. It considered the ongoing COVID pandemic concerns regarding the increased infections and hospitalization. The parties believe that it's in the best interest of employees as well as students and families to adopt a mandatory COVID vaccination program as part of an ongoing mitigation measure. And so, uh, the parties would agree that, uh, there would be instituted a COVID vaccine requirement for all employees effective October 4th. That, uh, should appropriate public law authorities or laws regarding COVID health and safety requirements change, the employer agrees to negotiate regarding the impact of implementing any changes. Protective equipment, the employer will provide masks and other protective equipment to employees, students and visitors. We already do that, and the employee, all employees, students and visitors over the age of two will be required to wear masks indoors and in restricted spaces such as vehicles, subject to accommodation for individuals with disabilities that impact their ability to wear a mask as recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and the State of Vermont. Vaccines, employees may use up to two days of administrative medical leave to receive and recover from the recommended dosage. And that includes the booster. And these days shall include the day of vaccination and the day immediately following vaccination. And the vaccination leave days shall not be charged to the employee's leave balance. Part-time employees shall receive vaccination leave on a prorated basis according to the average number of daily hours at work. And then the employer may require staff to provide proof of vaccination, subject to exemption of law. If an employee declines vaccination on the basis of disability or sincerely held religious belief, that employee will complete a vaccine declaration form. If the disability or the medical contradiction is temporary, then the employee is required to receive the vaccine as soon as possible. Request for exemption will be evaluated based on legal requirements. Employees who receive exemptions will be required to strictly adhere to public safety requirements, including wearing a mask at all times with limitations, exceptions, eating and drinking, at least six feet separation. And testing shall be required every seven days, paid for by the employer, and the isolation quarantine protocols required by the state. CD recommendations, the employer will maintain and store all vaccination verification and COVID testing records confidentially, securely, maintained separately from the general personnel files, will limit and will limit access to such information on a need basis. The employer agrees that any medical or personal information regarding the employee's vaccine declaration or any related limitations, requests or reasonable accommodations will be kept confidential and maintained separate from the personnel files. Quarantine leaves, all employees are required to quarantine due to work-related exposure to COVID will receive paid administrative leave to cover the quarantine period up to 10 calendar days or seven calendar days with employer-paid COVID testing. After five days from the date of exposure, this quarantine leave will not be charged to the employee's leave balance. Existing reasonable accommodations due to COVID, there are some employees and students with whom COVID vaccines may not provide the same protection as they do the general public. This MOU does not supersede existing or additional reasonable accommodations under the ADA. And the MOU is not precedent-setting and is governed, and is governed by the underlying terms and conditions of the bargain agreement. Nothing in this agreement shall constitute a waiver or modification of the provisions of the CBA, and it will sunset on June 30th, 2022. It must, we said that in writing. We can speak to a couple of things real quick in it. SIR funds, part of the grants that we have received, are appropriate and allowable to cover the quarantine administrative pay. So currently, right now, what happens is if a teacher has to quarantine and we've had a significant number of teachers quarantined, they have to start using their own sick leave to do that. And the concern that's starting to arise is, okay, I've used six days or seven days, what happens if I actually get sick later on? And, you know, how are we going to, are we going to tell people who are really sick that they have to come in to work? Or we've had the, the real possibility of seeing teacher may have to quarantine numerous times, uh, because of exposure or contact tracing. And so by allowing, um, and, and using SIR funds to pay for that time, we're not impacting the teacher on their sick days altogether. And we, and as employers, we're requiring them to quarantine. I think we lost everybody. Did we lose everybody?
That was hilarious. You got unplugged.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not talking loud enough.
Sorry.
I'm trying to get.
Okay.
I was trying to yell, but I'm.
I'm running out of.
Actually, I can hear you quite, quite loud and clear, Andy. Andy, can you hear us?
The HVAC system, great.
If we turned it off, we'd be all out here because we'd be sweating to death right now, so.
Andy, can you hear us?
We'll need to walk around with a megaphone.
What do you need from us, Andy? And can you explain if the, will this have to be an agreement entered in by all the local boards for the members that work for the local boards?
Jack may have, he has his hand up, so he may be able to answer that question better than I in my short tenure at this time, so.
Okay. This, this is an agreement that has be, that should be at least signed by your negotiating committee. It would be, you can't, you can make a provisional agreement here on this, but it would have to be ratified by all boards because it's a joint committee of the boards, it's not a S U board, it's not an S U committee. But we have, in the exigencies of the moment, have occasionally said, we'll take a, we'll take a provisional agreement at the S U board and then have that as an agenda item to walk around. And that's how I would recommend you do it. Couple of comments, though, if you may, or I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
All right. One, on paragraph four, it should say, the word should say voluntary vaccinations, not just vaccinations, because voluntary vaccinations that aren't effective, that's why you're putting mandatory ones in. That's item one. Item two is, there are a couple of things in here that are, that are interesting to me and I'm not really inclined to reveal a lot because, you know, adequate is better than perfect when we get it done in time. But, um, we, you've got, Kate, this quarantine thing bothers me only because, um, in companies and including DH, Jonathan Hitchcock, the process is, you can be quarantined, but you can work remotely from home. And I don't know if, uh, remote work is supported. You don't necessarily have to give people time off to quarantine for 14 days and then more time off if they're sick. If they're not sick, uh, they're available. And the question is, do we have the mechanism to allow them to teach or to do their jobs remotely? And I think that's a different question.
Jack, you're absolutely right in, in the instance where our teachers have had to quarantine, unless they are truly sick, like if someone, if, if, I'm not saying this happened, but if someone had COVID and couldn't teach, that would be one thing. But like when Westminster has had to close a classroom, the teachers were teaching remotely. They were either, because if students had to quarantine, but teachers, because they were vaccinated already, could come into the school. This happened in Grafton where the teachers were actually coming into school and still working. So, so this just kind of covers it to, in case that we had to do that. But we haven't had to have a teacher not work because of quarantine.
Well, the language in that, I would just ask you to look at it a little closely because, you know, our, our friends at the NEA have done things like this in the past where they'll, you know, sort of slip in language that as for something that we didn't intend to grant and this reads like quarantining is automatic and is paid and does not require a presence. And I would ask you to take a hard look at that and say, is that really the language we want there?
Sure enough.
You know, beyond that, I don't have an objection, but I would, if, if we're looking for a motion on this, I would, uh, I would be moving to authorize the superintendent to modify the agreement, the proposed agreement as needed and, and that we would give him permission to do that without bringing it back to the board.
Okay. Next, Priscilla.
I don't agree with the agreement because it's, in many parts of it, as I've written personally. I, you know, with the new rules on quarantining, we are not quarant, people are not required to quarantine by the current rule, current rules if they're vaccinated. And if our teachers are vaccinated, they would not be being required to, to be quarantining anyway. So therefore, all of that section on giving them time to quarantine and stuff does not apply. In addition, um, there's a whole lot of stipulations in there that I don't feel are necessary in a memorandum. Rockingham Board passed the motion this way. We move that all employees in Rockingham schools shall become vaccinated against COVID-19 with one of the approved COVID-19 vaccines, currently Moderna, Pfizer or Johnson &amp; Johnson. The first vaccination shall be administered on or before October 8th. That gave them till the end of next week. The second vaccination, if necessary, shall be timely, completed consistently with medical advice and that employees shall show proof of vaccination to the administration upon completion and/or upon request. Or the employee shall be tested for COVID-19 at least once every seven days, provide proof to administration and continue to wear masks. This will remain in effect until changed by the Rockingham Board. And the reason for our doing it that way is that, um, this is simple, it's part of policy, it's something that we can do as a motion, rather than entering into a whole lot of extenuating circumstances that are bound to change in the next couple of months. In particular, at the governor's conference yesterday, he talked about the fact that they are, they believe they will have a mandate for all school employees in the next few months. And if we enter into a memorandum of this type, we are bound by it for the, for the rest of this year. And that is far more expense to us than what is going to take place under our motion or under what is happening at the state level mandating vaccines for all school employees. That means that we will have, you know, what we've done by doing a motion of this type, a memorandum of this type, we've gone into a whole lot of extenuating things that I don't think are applicable under the circumstances of what we're doing. I think most employees are willing to have a vaccination rule in effect because we are, like at the Rockingham level, dealing with children that aren't vaccinated yet, although we're looking at something being approved hopefully in October. It's short, it's sweet, it avoids all those other issues that are in, in the lengthy memorandum, which, as Jack said, has to be going through the negotiating team anyway, and so isn't appropriate. And I'm not sure, I can't speak for my other board members, but I'm not sure that they want all these extra things in there. And so therefore, we have a motion for Rockingham already in effect.
Deb, right.
I think Jack's hand was up sooner, but, so I'll defer to Jack.
I know, but that's both last, so you can speak before Jack this time.
Oh, okay. My, my, my concerns are the testing. Are you going to be giving teachers a day off every seven days who don't want to get the vaccinations to take time off to go get tested? Isn't there any way to do that on-site by the school nurses and have those tests submitted? I'm just, I'm querying this here, don't know. But taking a day off is problematic, so.
No, they, they wouldn't, I mean, we are doing the surveillance testing and so they would utilize the surveillance testing to do that test.
Okay, so, and the other concern is the quarantining amount of time, all of that is, as Priscilla brought that up, but I'm afraid that without a legal. But I'm afraid that without a legal document, that um the motion that's been passed um might not be adequate.
I was just gonna clarify that.
I'm done.
Off was for vaccination.
Yeah, the day off, um, that I I spoke of and that Cheryl is bringing up was um for to actually get the shot. And then a second day off, um, if they needed that, if uh some people have a have some adverse effects to uh the vaccines.
Jack.
Yeah, um, respectfully, on the on the quarantining thing, I I get where you're coming from, Priscilla, and and I should say this to the chair. I I get where Priscilla's coming from. But the 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 reality is that uh vaccination prevents severe disease, and that's a great thing. Doesn't present, uh, doesn't prevent spread, and it doesn't necessarily prevent mild disease. So you could get a mild case, give it to a bunch of nine-year-olds who could spread it throughout the community. Uh, I I cite, uh, my my kid's next door neighbor plays catcher for the Red Sox. And uh, they were all vaccinated, and uh 11 members of the team ended up testing positive anyway uh in the month or so afterwards. Uh, they needed to be quarantined, and when they weren't, they nearly took the team out. Uh, the same can be said about little schools with lots of little kids in them. Uh, I think the quarantining part probably is rational, but giving them da- days off and not requiring them to teach is the part that I'm objecting to.
All right, anyone else on that subject? Did Jack put a motion on the floor? Jack did not get put a motion on the floor. I'm scribbling down here.
Yeah.
I'm scribbling here, so just give me a second.
No problem, I'll repeat it if you need it.
I did actually, so I I did speak to a staff member about the the quarantining. Because there are, well, most of our teachers have the ability to teach uh remotely. If they can't come to school, um, we do have, I know one teacher in Grafton where there's no cell service and no good internet at her house. Um, and then our paras get significantly less vacation time. And some of them, depending on their assignments, it it's like a hands-on type. So they, it would be sort of inequitable among the paras who could work from home and who couldn't. So I do understand that a bit. But I like, um, I'm gonna do what David Clark does and do his straw poll. I'm gonna do the David Clark straw poll to see if, to see if people are leaning towards an M O U or a uh a policy uh or vaccine. So go ahead. Lynn, what do you think?
I don't feel I understand the differences well enough to.
So the Rockingham Board, which kind of set a little bit of precedent, the Rockingham Board has made it a, this is a a policy condition of employment. It's how it's going to be. The M O U is a negotiated agreement with the union, which is um much longer than the, it has far more specifics written into it than the Rockingham policy. And it also has to go to negotiations committee, and it'll have to go to the union to have everybody sign it, and it will have to go to each board.
And with the one that Rockingham did, if there was any quarantining that was needed, that they've got no coverage, no coverage, right?
It would be on their own.
Quarantining, uh, can I answer just?
You may.
Um, quarantining by the the rules that are in effect right now from the state. Um, for example, we had children that could, that brought their vaccine cards and showed their vaccine cards, so they were not considered a close contact. The C D C definition includes the fact now that if you are vaccinated, you're not considered a close contact. So therefore, the teacher would not be a close contact if they're vaccinated, because they would have their vaccine card and they would not need to be quarantined. So we did, there is no quarantining in there because the quarantine wouldn't. And also, the teacher, like they were saying, would be able to teach remotely. If their class is, if the class is out because they had to quarantine, the teacher could still teach remotely. So they would not be under the same rules or the same situation as the others. So no, it does not have any quarantining in there. Uh, we were concerned with the timeframe because you could take a month or two to get this memorandum passed. Um, ours is effective and and starting, you know, we put October 8th because that's what my board members wanted. We were considering October 1st, but we moved it to the 8th to give that one extra week.
What would happen if a vaccinated teacher had a breakthrough and did come down with COVID?
Oh, isn't that the same thing as when you have the flu, or you have a cold, or you have any other kind of illness? It's basically the same thing. If the teacher ran out of of time, she could always come to the board and ask for it. Because the board, any board is allowed to grant additional leave time um if it's needed for that. So I'm sure our board would certainly consider it under under those kinds of situations.
Do they have a sick leave bank?
No, we, they've asked for one before, but um in some districts there are throughout the state, but in our districts, there is no bank. But they get, what, 15 days a year? And some of the teachers have, like, maybe a hundred, eight hundred, over a hundred.
I don't care.
Yes, please.
We we, despite the M O U or or if it's a if it's a policy piece, I mean, we could also look at, um, as I said, building in some funds with the S R grant to cover some of that. If there was a breakthrough or something like that, if we wanted to do it. Again, the concern that I've heard from teachers and from paraprofessionals is exactly that people may be at multiple points of needing to quarantine throughout the year. Because this isn't, we're not talking about just right now. We've had, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but there's been many days that people had to quarantine, and and most of them were students. Uh, but my concern is by not having that, we're we're putting our teachers at risk in that if they're now going to stay home and say they're sick. We're just getting to a point that we can give them some coverage and some backing that they know that if they have to do this, then we can, we can provide for them. Because we're telling them, unlike with the flu, if someone is sick with the flu, they can come into work the next day. But if they have COVID, they can't come to work. So there is a difference, and they could choose to use their sick days if they have the flu. But with COVID, they cannot come to work. And so uh, that's where I'm just looking at having um security for our staff and doing that piece. Jack, ever?
And are we still polling the board?
I am polling the board, we haven't made it very far here. I know where Priscilla sits on this. Jack, are you of the uh M O U or the other way?
Uh, well, I think that uh it's a false dichotomy. I think you should have a policy about vaccination, but uh, and and I I would suggest to my colleague at in Rockingham that uh, that you still have to use the pr- process for approving policies. I'm not sure they quite did that. But uh, the a policy that says, our staff shall be vaccinated is a policy procedurally. Uh, that can be implemented via a memorandum of, a memorandum of understanding. And what I've suggested is that that the, since this M O U in its current form needs a little massaging. Uh, you'll recall that my motion was to authorize the superintendent to do that massaging with the union and clean this apol- this uh M O U up so that it actually works. And uh, and that we would approve it at our next meeting, but essentially it would be enforced uh once they've signed. We're we're granting authority to the superintendent to sign on our behalf, negotiate on our behalf. I think that's how I would do it. If you all want to put a policy in that says, everybody should be vaccinated, fine, but that's separate. Uh, do you understand the the difference I'm making here?
I do.
Okay, I just think you've got to po- make a policy, make it short and sweet in two sentences, and have an M O U. And and pass my proposed motion to authorize Andy to negotiate it out in M O U.
Anyone else? Ollie, what do you think? Megan?
Can I?
Yeah.
At that time?
Sure.
We could also make shots mandatory, but do the rest in an M O U. You know, that would add on to that so that your schools could do a motion. Um, because the M O U needs, it's gonna take so much longer that it's it's it's, you know, you could do like the motion that Rockingham did. And then also do a memorandum of agreement that, because that's gonna take us a while, that's gonna take us well over a month to get that.
I don't know that it needs to take that long.
Okay, well, you gotta go run by all the boards, you've gotta, you've gotta have it agreed by by the teachers, you've gotta go through the negotiating team, you've gotta, you've got a whole lot of steps that have to be done for something like that. To me, to to me, doing like the motion, a similar motion to what Rockingham did, and then working out the other things, adding in a memorandum. If you want to do one, like for quarantine or for extra things like that, at least we're getting started. And at least preventing people vaccinated without putting it off.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, the the whole point of giving, uh, having Andy negotiate this was not to have a whole bunch of meetings. I'm perfectly willing, if Priscilla would like, to uh take a friendly amendment to the, from her, to the effect that we, it shall be the policy of the N, the W N E S U and all its member boards to require vaccination of its employees uh with certain exemptions. And to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a memorandum of understanding that should be binding upon the boards. That should clear up the issue about having something tonight and also allow the details to be worked out with our superintendent and staff. Does that make, would that be acceptable to uh to everyone with their concerns?
Um, as a friendly amendment, no, because it can't be binding on all the boards. The boards do, you cannot at any point make a motion in the S U boards that is binding on any of the individuals.
Then let me withdraw the language about binding, but to negotiate an M O U so we can get this train moving.
I'm still unhappy with a lot of the the um, the wording in the M O U. And I'm not sure that if it doesn't come back to the board, that I'll be happy with it.
So.
With what he comes up with. So it would have to be come back to the board before, from, in my opinion, it would have to come back to the board to look at and to make sure that we're comfortable with it.
If I'm correct, the negotiations committee is just a committee and does not sign contracts with the N E A. Nor are we required to have them write any of the language. Is that correct?
Not exactly. They sign, they sign the initial agreement, but then it's, then it's rolled around to the individual boards.
We ratify it at the board level, right.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't want to speak for um the association, but I do believe that there is a desire to um expedite and to move quickly on something. Whether it's an M O U, I mean, I I think they would prefer to have an M O U, but I I think that they are eager to have something in place.
Go ahead, Lynn.
When we first started talking about this on the Marco, we put it into negotiations because we had, were informed that we could not force vaccination on people. Has that changed?
It's, no. There becomes a question of what is a condition of employment? And what needs to be spelled out as a condition of employment? Whether or not that is something that gets bargained with the union? And the N E A has gone different ways in different places on this, um, which has been less helpful. So as far as I know, the the N E A chapters that I've been involved with are very much for this, for their members. It's their members that want this because they want their coworkers vaccinated that are around them. So that shouldn't be, it should not be a difficult negotiation. I think we should, um, what I would like to see is, if we use the word policy, it's the policy of the S U that you're, that you give your vaccine to work here. Then I think we're stuck with the reading it. But if we word it as a policy, I think we're stuck with the two readings before adoption. Is that correct? What I was thinking for a motion is that we could um state that we are going to require vaccination of all of our employees with the limited legal exemptions. And to accomplish that, we are going to off, we're gonna authorize the superintendent to alter the M O U um and not have to have us approve it, although I would not have to have a formal approval.
You're you're hoping, uh, because you don't want, you know, issues.
Do you want?
What they're gonna put in there, and we we have never approved something that goes through a memorandum or any of these other things without board approval afterwards. That doesn't, that doesn't work.
Do you think we could reconvene the boards for solely that item in the minimum allowed 48-hour? Would you be agreeable to that if it was proposed? That we then convene an emergency board meeting once Andy has the language updated and the unofficial approval of the N E A?
You you could also adopt the Rockingham motion.
In addition.
As it is done, and then we could continue on with an M O U to cover the other pieces. And I think that's kind of what.
That's what I'd like to see.
What Priscilla is referring to. So, I mean, that that is, that language that was in there was uh language that our attorney helped together. So, uh, the the motion that they made.
Uh, Rockingham made?
That Rockingham made was was uh, was that language. So, um, and I have spoken with our attorney about the mandate, the mandate and whatnot, and it is, I mean, we're not doing anything that we cannot do.
Okay, so.
That would make me much more comfortable, because I think that way we've got something in place and then, because if, if the memorandum has other stuff in it that we're, uh, everybody's uncomfortable with, and we've already come up with several areas that we're uncomfortable with it. Then we're stuck with the fact that we don't have one, and it could go on for who knows how long.
Okay, so, um, Deb, you still have your hand up or up again?
Yeah, I have it up again.
Go ahead.
Two things, number one, did we just pass, did you just bypass the fact that the Rockingham School Board needed two readings in order to pass a policy change? Number one. And number two, that's one. And number two, that's one, let me finish, please. And the second one is that risky behaviors practiced by anyone should not allow them to have to quarantine and receive paid administrative leave. And I'm pointing that out because that does happen occasionally. It's not just from the school that they have to quarantine themselves. So that part, there's no language in there for that. And I don't want to really make this deeper, I just want us to get things in place, but at the same time, I don't want to have to spend additional funds for, inappropriately. I want to make sure that this is properly handled, and that's what I have to say about it. Thanks.
Okay. What I am looking for is a motion reading the exact language that it is a requirement of employment, not a policy, from the Rockingham motion, which I think Priscilla has in front of her, and also adding that it will be formalized in detail via MOU. And what's the word? Not negotiated. The superintendent shall edit it, what have you, using whatever board meetings we need to put together to have it signed by the 30th.
By...
By everybody.
By the boards.
Every board. We have to get it done by the 30th, because otherwise we will not be getting vaccines till the end of the year. So, can we do that?
Our discussion's so moved, how's that?
I will withdraw my motion in favor of Deb's or yours.
I thought you did already, I'm sorry.
No, I was, but, but now I have.
Okay. Second for discussion.
Okay, what is the motion?
The motion is what you read in Rockingham.
Okay.
Plus, that
I'm dressed.
We authorize the superintendent to edit the MOU in such a way that the NEA and all the boards will get it passed by the 30th.
Sure. Let's do second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Priscilla.
There's, I mean, there's no guarantee that that, that happened by putting that date in there. I mean, and he's negotiating that, that it will be happy for all the boards, so that's, how is he going to do that? That's what I'd like to know.
I count one, two, three board chairs, soon to be a fourth board chair here tonight, and just will make it happen. Convene your emergency Zoom meeting with a minimum notice for an emergency meeting. And Andy will have the new language very soon.
Is, is, Andy, can I ask him a question?
You may.
Andy, is, does that mean that you will try to run that by us so that we can at least express some?
Yeah, I, I would, I would share it with you, as soon as I am able to meet with the, the association, if we can hammer something out, I mean, I'm going to share that draft, and we can work that back and forth, and try and come to an agreeable length.
And take into account what all of us have said tonight, so as to be...
I've already been editing as we, as we're talking.
I'm sure you are. I appreciate you so much.
No, I, I, I think that, as I said...
And the thing is...
I, I, you know, I, I put my feelers out before I sent this here, so I feel that we can get to an, to a, a level that will be acceptable to everybody.
Okay. Because keep in mind that the board chairs are just one member of our, our individual boards, and our board members would definitely need to have input before we could, I mean, we can try to speak for them, but we can't necessarily totally speak for them, because they have, they have their opinions too, and I certainly wouldn't want to step on my board members by saying that they would definitely agree to something.
Now, that's...
If that makes sense.
That's why putting the responsibility on the board chairs to do what you need to do.
Bring it to them.
To bring it to them. So Andy's going to email the draft motion to everybody tonight for input as individuals, as boards, whoever, and then we'll go from there. Jason, carry.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. It's, I just got to say, I haven't been on a Zoom in a while, and it's really hard to follow and hear all you guys. Not, not any fault of your own, but it just is. So, the document that Andy's sending out tonight, is that the document that he read?
Yes.
Okay. And I just had a question on that. Can you tell me again, again, because it was hard to hear you? What is the penalty if a teacher does not want to get vaccinated? Do they get terminated?
No, they have to get suspended.
So, so Jason, I, I'm just going to take my mask off so you can hear me. What we are, what we are saying is that they then have to submit to testing every seven days to be, you know, negative, because if they were then positive, they would have to work from home or quarantine for whatever they needed to do. It is my understanding that a large number of our faculty, vaccinated, unvaccinated, have signed up for the surveillance testing, and a good number of students have as well. So, I, I don't think it will be much of an issue, and too much of a privacy issue, to say, like, we're getting on the intercom and calling down Sally and Mary because they need to take their vaccine test. But there is no, there is no, you lose your job.
Can I, can I ask another question? A follow-up on that? What do they, maybe Jack or Jessa, you guys know, what do they do in Dartmouth if somebody does not get vaccinated?
I'm not 100% sure about Dartmouth, but I can speak for my employer. The surveillance testing, if you have a medical exemption, then you will have, then you may be tested, I think it's twice a week. You have to wear a mask all the time, you have to wear an N95 when you're in with people who aren't vaccinated. And if you choose not to get vaccinated, you're put on unpaid administrative leave for up to one year, and then you're terminated.
Okay. And then, um...
Only, there's only medical exemptions where I work.
And then, then lastly, thank you for bearing with me. So I, I think I heard somebody say that only 67% of the staff at Rockingham was vaccinated or something like that?
I actually, somebody mentioned to me that that is the current number of replies they have, but they might not have everybody, because the, the questions were sent out a little bit late from the middle school.
Right, right.
It was the middle.
Let's just say it's 60% or far below the 80% or whatever it is. What kind of, have, have we talked to the teachers to ask them why, like, get their input, or does that not matter? I'm just, just want to, I just want to be straight in my head.
I don't know if any...
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to answer on, on the, on the middle school, then, they are actually in the process of checking vaccine cards, I think, because, yeah, that is a really low number, and it, it, it does not reflect the number of teachers that have been vaccinated. It really, I'm sure, is a much, much higher percentage.
Yeah.
And when you look at the fact that Rockingham is 71 to 80% vaccinated at all levels of testing, and, and throughout the Rockingham district, there's no way that, that, you know, and, and then there's other districts that are higher, that are, are the 80 to 81 to 90%. So, you've got, you've got that question out there that you just don't know.
That's what the, the person who texted me about it said, that that was sent out within the last couple of days, and so it's, it's pretty likely that it's just not, the numbers aren't fully in yet.
Okay. But, but we, this rule is going to, you want 100% vaccination, so what if it's 95? You still, are we asking the person, why? Are we, are we, you know, what is, what are we doing with that? I just, I, I think, I think it's, it's, it's good knowledge to understand what, I mean, people have rights. You know, I, I may believe in vaccination, but I also may believe in not giving someone else a shot that they don't want. So I just, I just want to know what the plan is.
So, there is a vaccination exemption, so that a person, if there is a reason that they are not to be vaccinated, if it's a medical reason, or if it's a religious reason, and that was what I read in the memo, would be that they would have to document that that is the reason why they are not.
What, what if they say, I just don't, I think that 99% is, is, of this disease is curable, you know? 99% of people recover from this disease. So I just, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand, guys. I'm not trying to be a pain. I'm just trying to understand. So I just, I want to have all the facts out there, and I want to do the best thing for all the people. Thanks for listening.
Yeah, thanks for speaking, and I, I, I do understand there's some vaccine hesitancy, and I think it would be totally reasonable for us as, we're not just an employer, we're sort of a, a community. We're going to put this out with the, there's a date that you have to be vaccinated by, but I think it would be reasonable if we made, especially our nursing staff, I know one of them has employment history in infectious disease. If we made them available to talk to those people that might be hesitant about it, but at this point in time, the philosophical exemption is no longer a thing. So we're going to have the documented ADA accommodation of not receiving the vaccine, and whatever limited allowance Vermont has for religious beliefs, if that's required. Otherwise, that's just how it's going to be, unless somebody else has... Go ahead, Jack.
I just, Molly's had her hand up for 12 minutes and counting, I just wanted...
I don't see, Molly's got her picture, so the hand is almost the same color as your wall. Go ahead, Molly. Sorry.
So I think probably most of my questions were answered by everyone else, but what I heard when you first started talking about the chairs bringing this to the boards were that, you know, our chairs are going to convince our board to vote the way we want them to vote. So, I'm going to tell you that, no, let me, so I'm going to tell you that that's not, you know, we need to go to this as, and, and put this to our board for doing the right thing. You're, if we're educators and we want to be in a school with all of our kiddos, then we need to do the right thing. If people are totally against the vaccine, then they have that right. And everything I'm hearing, I'm really not sure why I would spend almost an hour on this, because we've talked about this every time and nothing has changed. We, we have a vaccine in place for people who will take it, and we also have a testing procedure in place for the people who don't take it. And as a school, if we're going to, I hate this word, mandate that somebody has to, then we got to get a ducks in a row. I'm really surprised that you have numbers like you're giving us, because I would think as an educator, you know, in a building with a lot of people, that, you know, they would be, wanting to be very careful, but that's not for me to say. That's, that's, that's their decision. We had a lady at the last meeting that, I mean, she was very much not for it, and, and so what do you do with that employee? Or what you're telling me right now is that your employer basically does move on home. So I guess that's my only question is, is that where we're heading? Because I'm not hearing this clearly. What if somebody doesn't get vaccinated?
What, what I meant by the, the timeframe, I didn't make it to sound like, go make your board vote. I've just, I made it, that's not what I meant, like, tell them how to vote, get it. Don't wait, like, convene an, an emergency meeting once Andy has this draft prepared to get an answer one way or another, so we don't just keep dragging this out, because otherwise it's going to be another month before everybody's regular meetings. And that's, and, and if your board votes not to agree to the MOU, I mean, that's your, that's your board's decision, but we should try to get it done in just over a week, either way. Just get it done, get the language decided upon in the next few days, and then convene an emergency meeting of each of the boards, and they can come back with changes, or they can shoot it down entirely, or they can approve it. I just don't want to push it out like four more weeks, because...
Okay, so, so you didn't really answer my question, maybe Andy, you can, you know, I've got a board meeting Monday, and I'm sure this will be another hour and a half discussion about something that we should just be able to make a vote on. But the question I really have is, I haven't heard yet, what if we have that top-notch teacher that just totally disagrees with this, doesn't want to do it? Is there a plan for that person so that we don't lose that person in our system, but still keep everyone safe? I'm not trying to say that I don't think that people should, you know, do this, I'm saying, what if? What if, what if I'm the leader of this place, and when I'm not here, the place doesn't tick right, and, and I decide I'm not going to do it? You know, what happens to that position? You know, you know, I can go hide in an office, these people can't, but what happens?
So...
Are we going to lose somebody really, really good?
We, we were basing that the memo, the MOU that I, I have a draft that I've sent to you guys, was based on, like, what the federal government is, is requiring, that people, if they don't get tested, that, or if they don't get vaccinated, then they're going to have to do the testing all the time. And so, we're not going to lose a teacher, I mean, I would hope that we're not going to lose a teacher, because we're requiring vaccination, but we're going to require them to get tested. If they come back positive, we're going to have them, you know, they're going to have to quarantine. Every school has remote plans in place for when that happens. So, at the high school, if a teacher has to quarantine, there is a plan in place for an adult to be in the building, it might be a substitute, and then the teacher is remotely teaching the class from home. So we're not, so some of, we get into the dollar pieces that, that I know are concerning to people, some of it is, so maybe we're paying for the cell and, and not the teacher, right? But if the, if the teacher has to quarantine to be home, and they're remotely coming in, and the students are here, we need a physical body in front of the students, and that's a cost to the SU or, or to the district. And so if we could use grant funds to then cover that cost, then that's not a cost that we're, we're taking, forcing the person to stay home. But we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to terminate a, a teacher or a staff member because they refuse to get vaccinated.
Thank you.
If I could just follow up, when you talked about the numbers, the numbers are the, are the numbers I was provided by the, the principals in the last two days. So if, that's the, the latest numbers they have. If, if like at the middle school, they're still working on it and, and trying to get tighter numbers, then we just don't have those yet. However, in some of these buildings where it's like 95% or 94%, we have small percentages of staff to begin with, so one or two staff members who, for some, maybe it's a medical reason, cannot, you know, are not getting vaccinated, that's going to push your number to 94, just like that. So, it's not necessarily that a staff is refusing, it might be a legitimate reason why they're not, but that's why it's not 100%, it's at 94%, because it's one or two staff members.
Okay. So I just want to follow up, just, thank you, Andy. That, that was the kind of words I guess I needed to hear. I just, you know, I think, you know, we need to make it very clear to our staff and the community, really what we're doing here. You know, we're trying to do the best thing, but, you know, I don't want them to, you know, wake up tomorrow morning and look at the Bradbury Forum and, and have the headline be, you know, WNESU is going to start firing people if they're not vaccinated, because that's not... that's not the truth. And I just wanted to, I wanted that to get out in this discussion. I am going to start driving home, so I may lose you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote on Deb's motion that we use the Rockingham language and authorize Andy to edit the MOU and send out for?
Rule?
For approval? With the understanding that everybody can send him their comments, edits, proposals, what have you, in the next couple of days?
Well, we're, we're going to be, we're going to be reviewing this tomorrow, what Jessa, so he doesn't have that much time.
I was trying to keep it vague. So are we ready to vote on that? Okay. Deb?
Aye.
Jack?
Sure.
Molly?
Aye.
Uh, Jase? Jason Benson?
Yes.
Jason Terry?
No.
No. Um, that's everybody on. I got Deb Wright. Megan?
How about yes?
And Priscilla?
All of them.
And Lynn?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously. Next up, resignation of board members. So come to find out, board members on the SU are appointed by their individual boards. So we don't have to deal with approving resignations, but I wanted to give David, if he's here, which I don't think he is, and Jason Terry a chance to speak if they'd like, and if they don't want to, that's perfectly fine, too.
I'm sure we could certainly, we could certainly recognize those resignations with regret or whatever, if people would like to do that. I, I don't know if that's even a thing we want to do or just want to move on.
I think the understanding is that they're regretful. I don't think anybody's happy about it. I didn't think that had to be said. But even though we don't have to move on it, I still wanted to give Jason Terry a chance to speak if he would like to. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, not, not at all. I, listen, I, I, it's very confusing being on all these boards, to be honest with you. I'm a very busy individual. My kids are very involved in their schools. And it's just, it's a lot of stuff going on, and it's just too much to have, be on three boards plus all the committees. But, you know, next week, if Molly wants to appoint me to the, to this board, I certainly would do it. So, thank you.
All right. And thank you for being with us for the number of years that you worked.
Jessa, did you make the point that the reason Jason is not is because he resigned from the Rockingham Board?
Yeah.
And he was a representative from the Rockingham Board? And we did accept his resignation on Monday night. He wasn't there to speak to us. We were hoping that he would be, but he wasn't, and we did end up accepting it because he had sent a letter to us. But, which is what took him off from our board here. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had to be, we wouldn't have had to be off ours, but we had to, we had only three appointed from our board, and so we have to have members from our board that are on our board.
Yes. So thank you, Jason Terry, and we might see you from the high school board next week. Five B, we removed from the agenda. Five C, seating the Westminster members. Cheryl, if you could just briefly speak about what went on at the State Board of Education and why you're here to be seated?
Right, thank you. On Wednesday, September 15th, the State Board of Education did officially approve Westminster's withdrawal from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District to be, I have all the language here, I have submitted that, I think Jessa, you have a copy of it from, from the state. The intention, though, is that even though the board doesn't have full authority until July 1, 2022, what's important now is that three members of the Westminster School Board may be seated here and are fully authorized to vote on matters related to budget and personnel. It's to allow Westminster to have full participation in the planning process that will affect the taxpayers as we develop budget and those kinds of things. So that's where we are. I could read more of it, but I think it's not necessary. You get the idea, and we have it for the record.
Yes, we have it for the record. The State Board of Education said, go ahead and seat your Westminster members, yet they are only authorized to vote on items determined by the chair to pertain to budget. However, staffing and personnel is part of the budget because we pay the staff. I, I think they gave us a decent amount of leeway. So at this point, we would like to hear your three Westminster School Board members that are being appointed to the SU.
Well, those three persons are the three elected members who serve at this time. So that would be, that would be me, that would be Charlie Hutchison, who's participating tonight, and David Major. And David is at a Westminster Select Board meeting tonight because their meetings are at the same time. But we would be the three persons authorized to sit at the table at this point.
And Jessa, could you also address the fact that the other members of the new, the other, the old W?
The, whatever it is. Oh, the union, so the Westminster, Westminster's representatives to the Union Elementary School had to resign from the Union Board to be the, was it resigned? What was the?
Only, oh, let's start this over. I, I resigned only because I was elected to the.
Because you were elected to the.
But Elise Manning, who's sitting here.
Elise is still there.
Melissa Carlson, who is on that WNUS EFD Board as well, remain elected representatives on that school board. They still have those responsibilities. The difference, for all matters, that come before the Union Elementary School District, the difference here is to give the Westminster Board additional involvement because of the budget implications and the implications for taxpayers. But all other matters as normal, the elected members to the Union Elementary Board or appointed, in Elise's case, because she was appointed to take my seat, will continue with their responsibilities until July 1, 2022.
So I think the, the Westminster, the town of Westminster has withdrawn from the Union Elementary School District.
Correct.
The Union Elementary School District still exists, although it's basically Athens and Grafton.
No, you still.
After, after July 1.
Correct.
We're sitting with our existing Union Elementary Board until then.
Correct.
And Athens and Grafton are not, we are not leaving the Union Elementary District. We are remaining as is.
Correct.
Even though we were similar but different as is, I think some people were confused that it's not a breakup, it's just one town withdrawing.
That is correct. And it's important for everybody to know that Athens and Grafton together after July 1 comprised the Union Elementary School District. You still have that Union Elementary District made up of those two towns.
Right.
Okay. So can I ask a question then? So do the representatives then of the Union Elementary, are they just kind of the Athens-Graftons ones now, those other three, the three from there and three from Westminster? Or are we having extra representation from Westminster?
Lynn, he go. Lynn?
Westminster folks that are still part of the UE are the day-to-day activities. The new board, Westminster Board people are only dealing with the budget that they will then take on when they take power in 2022. So they have nothing to do with the day-to-day process.
We're not removing the Union Elementary Board members, which I think is.
Westminster's still a part of the Union.
Me, Lynn and Jack.
Jack, Jessa?
Yep.
Yep. And so we are adding three members to the SU Board for the new Westminster. So we have a, this is why the bylaws are on the agenda, because they weren't actually updated when we had.
So Jack is from, from Grafton.
We're from, well, we're all from the Union.
Yeah, but, but the breakdown, Jack, Jack is from Grafton and you are from?
Grafton.
And Lynn?
From Athens.
Is from Athens. So.
Yeah, there's no longer any distinction as to which town you're from.
No, I just was trying to get that clear in my head. So the three representatives right now are ones that could continue next year with the Union Elementary, because they are from those towns that are still going to be in the Union Elementary.
Yes.
But the Union Elementary at the local level also includes Westminster, new Westminster people, so it's to cover all of the day-to-day stuff at your local levels.
Well, it's Westminster people, she's been here.
She's on the U.
Yeah, and she's, she's come, but she's not voting yet.
They have their seats on the Union Elementary Board still for this year's governance. And then we're adding the three for next year's governance, but because the issues for next year are decided upon this year, yeah, they need, they need a voice. Go ahead, Jack.
Just making it clear in my head, thank you.
Yeah, a, a, as, as the chair of the Unified Board, and as the guy who wrote the memorandum that Donner used as basis of her ruling, the way this works is like this. We have, the, the Westminster will have operational, and that's a key word, operational authority as of July 1. It means they have the day-to-day oversight that you would have as a board for a lot of the matters we're talking about tonight. But for all things that relate to planning, all things that take effect as of July 1, which would be a budget, you don't want to have people running a budget that they didn't approve. You don't want them to approve, to be working with a, a staff that they didn't sign off on when they sign off on the roster. You don't want them having to, taking to effect a, a teacher contract if they didn't have a seat at the table in, in defining that contract. Those type of things are now the purview of the Westminster School District today as of, as of the SVE's authorization. So that's how that works. The Unified District has, is it still a three, it's still a functional three-town district? It will become a functional two-town district, probably with a different name, come, come March, and that will take effect as of, as of July. So this is, this is a transition similar to the stuff we went through when Act 46 took place. And yes, there's some awkwardness in it, but we're trying to be very sensitive to both giving our Westminster colleagues their full voice for what 90% of our work is planning as a board, give them that full voice. And that's why we've, we've re-triggered our, our membership and why we, you know, because right now, I'm the third member instead of, instead of Cheryl on the Unified District Board. And that's, so let's say now, the, the membership on this, on, on the SU Board is entirely Athens and Grafton. And Westminster has that seat, and there are times when, when it feels like something that is an op, is a day-to-day item where Westminster may want to speak, we'll certainly listen to them and probably our colleagues will, will vote in their, in their favor on such items if they come up. That's, that's the best we could do, and I hope this will be satisfied, satisfactory to everybody.
All right. So I believe we need a motion to approve seating of those three people?
You have that motion.
We have that motion, and the second? And let's vote. Lynn?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Please.
Oh, you're not a voting member, sorry. Jack?
Yes.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
Deb Wright? Come back to Deb. Megan?
Yes.
Okay. Deb, are you muted or you're not there? Could be both. We actually can say that Deb abstained and the motion still passes. Welcome to the board.
Your planter here?
Yes. Oh, and I think Charlie, Charlie Hutchison is out there on Zoom. He is the third Westminster member, and David Major. Thank you, welcome board, you've been here before. Next we have on the agenda, the bylaws, which include things like who's members of the Supervisory Union and the Supervisory Union Board. And we're not going to be able to, I was reading the bylaws of the process to amend the bylaws, and it's not something that can be done tonight. The bylaws were never rewritten when the Union Elementary haven't, so they still reference the town of Athens School Board, the town of Grafton School Board. Those need to be updated.
Yes. I think that the bylaws, what we did was we suspended.
We did.
And so since we've suspended them, they're still in suspension, so I don't.
Fantastic.
There's a problem. There isn't at this point.
That is fantastic that the bylaws are suspended. We should make plans on some calendar to get them updated and corrected by July 1. I don't know whose job it is to remember that, but.
We will remind you on a regular basis.
I'm sure. So that takes care of that. Do we have any old unfinished business? My month's going twice. Appointments and resignations. Andy, that'd be you. Do we have any?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. We will do director's comments and then move for an executive session. Lynn, you want to go first?
No.
Priscilla?
I just want to say that I, I really appreciate the professionalism of all of the board members and the way they're, they handle all of everything and the way we can work together. Be kind to each other, stay safe, and just continue using that consideration for each other.
Cheryl?
I don't have anything else to add tonight, thank you.
Please? Jack?
Just a congratulations and my sympathies to our interim superintendent and to our acting chair. You never knew you wanted this, and now you've got it, both of you, so there you go.
Jason Benson?
I have nothing tonight.
Deb Wright, are you there? Yes, she's not there. Megan Applegate?
I'm good, thank you so much, Jessa.
Molly Bannick, are you there?
I am here.
Do you have any director comments?
Uh, no, I do. Good job tonight, Jessa.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that actually leaves me, right? There's nobody left? Charlie, that's right, you're a board member now. Charlie Hutchison, do you have any director comments?
Uh, nothing, no. I, I'm glad we clarified the question about vaccination, about the two options, vaccination versus, versus testing. Nobody's being mandated to choose one or the other, they just have to do one of them. And that's. they just have to do one of them, and that's, that, to be crystal clear about that.
As it sits tonight.
What was that?
That is, that is, as it sits tonight, it's still a draft.
Yes.
But that is.
Oh, I thought we just voted on that, that was Priscilla's motion, wasn't it? Didn't it? It skipped the option of, of being tested if they didn't vaccine.
Yes, the MOU is still a draft, the motion is passed.
Yeah, so any staff member has the option of choosing either vaccination or testing.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, oh, that leaves me, so, um, I don't think I did too bad tonight. Right, our meeting has the chair. Um, David Clark was right, where he's like, ha-ha, it's your problem now. Because it is actually a very big job, it's kind of busy. The only thing I had is housekeeping that I didn't know where else to put. Um, when we have documents that are going out in email or what have you, it would be very convenient if we could put draft at the top, or watermark them, draft. And then the final version, we'll try to put in a PDF, because we don't really have version edit control and stuff now. And I think that just makes it a little bit easier. Like when I was trying to get the agenda and all the other stuff, I had to make sure I found the most recent one. And I think if we had just all of our documents, especially with the MOU's gonna be going around, just put draft on it.
Yes.
And then, um, I meant to bring this up at the beginning, because it's kind of for all the boards that, um, we were talking about principals' meetings, and the principals go to a lot of meetings, but there's also other people that we summon or invite to various board meetings, because we need something from them, usually the principals, sometimes it's transportation, and just, it would be nice if we could all try to be courteous and let them go first on the agenda, uh, since we're sort of adding another meeting to their schedule. And that's just sort of a reminder for all of us to let our invited guests go first. And then, um, Secretary Dan French, um, would love to join us on the twenty-seventh of October. I just have to get back to him with the time and location, which is item ten, which we'll do out of order. Um, the next regular scheduled meeting should be the twenty-seventh of October at six-thirty PM at BFUHS, is that correct?
Say the day again.
The twenty-seventh of October?
That is correct.
That's the date of the next meeting. Now I'm looking for a motion for an executive session to discuss, uh, personnel matter that needs to be confidential, grievance, and a legal matter. I don't actually think there's any action to follow. There will not be action to follow, so, um, Act TV doesn't have to come back.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody for coming, especially the people online bearing with us for this two-and-a-half-hour meeting.
Jessa, if we have to add to that, then, um, the preliminary, um, information might could, the situation.
I don't know if he's drafted for legal advice, personnel matter. Okay, add the, I'm looking for the motion, so are you making it with that addition? The normal language about premature public knowledge.
Right.
And second? Lynn, seconds? And do we have any nays? Do we have all the ayes? Yes? All right. Public session ends at eight forty-seven PM, and now we will have executive session with no action to follow. Thank you.